Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Thank you for coming out on this rainy, damp day. But was it April showers, spring mayflower? So the next time...
What is what?
What are mayflowers, Brad?
Pilgrims.
Pilgrims, yes. So the next time I'm down here, we'll be tuned. I expect to see all the flowers will be out and blossoming and things are greening up. I want to thank you tonight for coming to the town hall and the listening session on Medicaid expansion. I am joined by my Assembly colleagues from La Crosse and La Crosse County. Representative Jill Billings joins us from the 95th Assembly District and Representative Steve Doyle from the 94th, which is everything outside of La Crosse and La Crosse County. Several of our colleagues, we are doing these listening sessions around the state to hear from you, but also to give you some information about the inclusion of this in Governor Evers' budget. And so we are pleased that Governor Evers is kind of the vessel for Medicaid expansion here in Wisconsin and what that means in access to health care, what it means in behavioral health, mental health services, what it means for addressing opioids and the addiction here in Wisconsin, what it means for reimbursement rates for the medical, for doctors, for nursing homes and things like that. We are being livestreamed right now, so people will know that, that we have that opportunity, that on Facebook, that... So tonight's discussion will be out there and available for people who can't join us here tonight. So I thank you for the services of being livestreamed tonight as we talk about this discussion. And I will go through the slideshow and kind of kick it off. I will turn, I think Jill, do you start off? Oh, Steve, Representative Doyle starts off first. And we will go through these slides and it kind of is, allows us to kind of get some, if you've got questions or thoughts, and then after the slideshow, if you kind of have this discussion and Q and A on this and what this means, will mean for you and our community, our state, and as we move forward, kind of what the timeline is on the budget. So with that, I will hand it over to Representative Doyle.
Thank you very much. And thanks for coming out tonight, Amy Ring. We really appreciate seeing you here. This is an important topic for us because this is really kind of the crux of how the governor is talking about funding so many things that are important to us, not just in healthcare, in education, and so on and so forth. And so because this is really the linchpin of that, we thought that it's important to get out to the people throughout the state so that you understand a little bit better what we mean when we're talking about these issues. So when we say Medicaid expansion, when we talk about Medicaid in Wisconsin, we're really talking about Badger Care. And Badger Care is a program that has been aimed at lower-income people. And I want to talk about that for just a moment. When we say lower income, we're not talking the poorest of the poor. In many cases, we are talking about the working poor. And this is a program that helps people that otherwise wouldn't have access to health care coverage, other than if you don't have Badger Care, you find yourself doing a lot of situations in, you're getting your health care through the emergency room door, which is the most expensive way to get health care, and also the way that you and I pay for other people when they go in. That's that concept called help on cost shifting. So if somebody doesn't have insurance, they have an illness or something, going through their medical or the emergency room door, can't afford to pay the bill, somebody has to cover that cost, everybody else's costs go up. That's really what it comes down to. And so when Governor Evers was talking about expanding Medicare, what we're talking about is getting more people out of the uninsured category and into the insured category so that we don't have that cost shifting. So when we talk about this in Wisconsin here, Badger Care really started out back in the late 1990s under the Clinton administration. And we used to have this concept of what people just generally look forward to as welfare and programs like that. That was replaced by a program called CANF, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. That started in July of 1999. Initially, that program had 3,400 people in it. By 2,000, it had expanded up to 51,000 people. So a very successful program. A lot of people who had never had insurance coverage before now found themselves able to go in and get preventative care, get care at the shallow end rather than waiting for things to be really bad and getting at the expense of what we call deep end care. So this has been a program that really has worked well in Wisconsin. I want to talk about what Badger Care looked like before the Affordable Care Act and then after the Affordable Care Act. Yep. She's way ahead of me. She knows even better than I do, but she should hit the button there. So she did a good job. So prior to the Affordable Care Act, Badger Care was really for two categories of people: pregnant women and children under age six, the family income's at or below 133% of the federal poverty level, and children age six to 18, the family income's at or below 100% of the federal poverty level. Since the Affordable Care Act, Badger Care is currently limited to people earning up to 100% of the federal poverty level. Parents of caregivers earning between 100% and 200% of the federal poverty level lost Badger Care coverage under Governor Walker's revised program. So it's that group of people. The poorest of the poor covered, the working poor not covered. That's really what we're here to talk about, is that group of people that sometimes have, you know, one, two, maybe even three part-time jobs. They don't have insurance coverage to do that. So they're working really, really hard and they're getting nothing for it in terms of any sort of insurance coverage. And, you know, when they're looking at going into the marketplace and so forth and trying to find coverage that's not through Badger Care. You know, if you're working, you know, 20 hours a week at McDonald's and you're making a little bit of minimum wage, you simply can't afford to buy food, pay rent, and then, you know, health insurance, even when it's through the exchanges. So current Badger Care coverage since the Affordable Care Act, if you want to get federal funds, you as a state have to provide medical coverage to those who are earning 138% or less of the federal poverty level. Wisconsin did not do that. If you do that, what happens is you get this federal match then. And the last slide I want to be talking about is the one, and I think really is what also comes down to, why we're so enthusiastic about the governor's proposal and upset about what we have foregone. So by, since later, 2014, by not expanding Badger Care, Wisconsin really said goodbye to $2.8 billion of federal funds. Those federal funds, by the way, where do those dollars come from? They come from us, right? It's our money that we raise in Wisconsin through taxes, we send to Washington. They're saying, hey, you want this money back? And we're saying, no, thanks. You keep it. Send it to California or New York or Florida or wherever, but we don't want it. That's really what this issue comes down to. And Wisconsin would have saved a billion dollars just in Badger Care, it's got to lower if we had taken the Medicaid campaign. That is why we are here tonight, because that is our money, it's going elsewhere, and we really believe that it should come back. Governor Evers' budget proposal says, hey, let's take this money back and, you know, we can find lots of people that need coverage. We can find a lot of things like education and transportation and other expenses that we have in Wisconsin that are worthy expenses that we simply don't have the ability to cover at this point. So that's what we're talking about tonight. I'm going to turn over to Representative Billings, and she's going to pick up the next few slides.
Good evening, everyone. As we see by the map above, there are 37 states, including the District of Columbia, that already have expanded Medicaid. States that really are majority both sides of the aisle, so this is not an extreme idea. Other states are doing it and are benefiting from this. So as Representative Doyle said, the budget that Governor Evers introduced, the people's budget, would cover initial 82,000 people by expanding Medicaid. The Medicaid program is paid in part by the federal government and in part by the state. Under the Affordable Care Act, the federal government pays for 90% of the costs in states that expand Medicaid. That's 90% is paid by the federal government. So the thing is that the state's already spending this money. Currently, there are 150,000 childless adults enrolled in the Medicaid program here in Wisconsin. The thing is, instead of getting that 90% federal match for this group, we're receiving only 59% from the federal government. This is money from the federal government for the people of Wisconsin, our federal tax dollars that we have paid in that is being left on the table. By expanding Medicaid to 138% of poverty, we're drawing down those funds and using it to expand coverage and access for everyone. And it's important to remember that our current Medicaid program covers parents and childless adults up to 100% of poverty. That's roughly minimum wage of $7.25 an hour. So this is someone who is a waiter in our local restaurant, a shift worker, or your daughter's childcare provider. So by expanding Medicaid to 138%, we can help low-wage earners take another shift and earn a little bit more money and still have affordable health care. So I talked to both, I'm sure you all have talked to both employers and workers, who have said that there are people, that they have employees or they're a worker, who would like to work a little bit more, but they can't in fear of losing their health care. So if we could accept the Medicaid expansion dollars, we could increase that Medicaid to 138%, and we'd have more people who could fill more of those hour slots that are left open as unemployment is so low. It also helps people whose incomes fluctuate above and below the poverty line throughout the year. There are some workers who, they're always watching paychecks, 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 worried, am I making too much money? Am I going to lose my health care? That's a problem in Wisconsin. So expanding Medicaid's not just about the people who are newly covered, it also improves access for everyone. With 324.5 million dollars, we say, we reinvest it in new initiatives to improve access, strengthen our health care workforce, and expand coverage for vital services, which draws down additional federal funding. So we can, if we get that money, we can use it in other areas, provide that matching state dollar and draw down even more federal dollars in Wisconsin. That results in a $1.6 billion in new federal funds to the state of Wisconsin. $1.6 billion in new funds to our state. The Medicaid expansion is a lever that we can pull to increase new federal dollars into the rest of our health care system, a system that impacts all Wisconsinites, not just those enrolled in Medicaid, as we know about cost shift for people who don't have health care that we all, we all end up paying. So some of the initiatives that Governor Evers has in his budget to help Wisconsin because of accepting Medicaid expansion dollars would help deal with the opioid epidemic that we have here in Wisconsin along with nut and milk. It increases dental access, addresses health care workforce shortages, increases funding to long-term care programs, reduces health disparities, provides coverage for health care services and benefits. And some officials are going to give us some more of a deep dive into the budget and specific examples of how that can benefit Wisconsin.
Thank you. As we look at the Medicaid investments, some specific investments that we make, that we can make as a state will allow us to have a historic $48 million investment in oral health care. And for those of you who may or may not know, that's one of the issues that I have been working on for years about increasing dental reimbursement rates for our dentists, that if you are a Medicaid patient, it is often very difficult to find a provider in western Wisconsin or across the state, but in western Wisconsin that will accept patients on Medicaid. One of the programs that we expand with these savings would allow us to increase the dental services to school-age children. When kids are free from oral health pain, they can focus on learning. I am pleased that we have a, I think it's a three-county pilot program on reimbursement rates for dentists, and we are seeing, collecting that data and demonstrating that it is a valuable program that works. And when dentists receive a higher reimbursement rate, they will accept those, the Medicaid patients. To help with local communities, the budget also provides operating funding to support community-based regional crisis stabilization centers for adults. So looking at mental health and behavioral health services in that area to help keep people closer to home. We see that people are more successful in rehabilitation if they are located closer to home, in the support of family, friends, and their community. And so those regional stabilization centers are really important, where they will have easy access to that natural support system. Also, the budget would leverage federal funding to support lead abatement in approximately 1,000 homes a year. Governor Evers has talked about 2019 being the year of clean water, and one aspect is clean drinking water. And so by looking at the lead laterals that exist in older communities, older cities particularly in Milwaukee, but also in other communities across the state, looking to make sure that we can have lead abatement would help address health disparities, improving the quality of housing, and keep future generations from lead exposure. The program will train and license workers in their own communities to help remove lead paint in homes, creating jobs and enhancing workers' future economic potential between the lead in homes and the lead laterals leading to, into homes. We also extend Medicaid eligibility for pregnant women to one year after birth. That, the governor has a Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies initiative, and by giving moms a full year of guaranteed coverage, we will allow them to focus on helping getting their children off to the best start in life possible while simultaneously ensuring that they get the postpartum care that is sometimes needed, including mental health care to help raise healthy families. And so looking at healthy families, healthy children, healthy communities, it's all linked together. The last investment I will mention through the budget covers many more initiatives. It's our expansion of dementia specialists. In the budget, Governor Evers increases the number of dementia care specialists from 21 to 48, so that there will be a dementia care specialist in every aging and disability resource center in the state. The number of tribal dementia specialists will also increase from three to six, so that every tribe will have access to their own specialist or access through their ARDC. We also know that expanding Medicaid will have a positive economic impact across the state as well. And as we look at the slide, it demonstrates that the budget supports Wisconsin's direct care workforce by increasing funding for providers in long-term care programs and services, nursing homes, and personal care, so they can pay these workers a competitive wage. I can tell you, for years, I've been meeting with nursing home administrators and director of nursing. I've been meeting with the dentists and the health care providers on doctor days. Reimbursement rate, reimbursement rate, reimbursement rate is a continual theme that we have heard about. And certainly as we look at the shortage of health care workers, CNAs in particular, but other areas, we talk about trying to increase wages, increase reimbursement, there is a correlation of being able to take those federal dollars to expand that. In Colorado, the data shows that the state supports more than 30,000 additional jobs because of the Medicaid expansion. In Montana, another study found that the expansion is estimated to generate $1.2 billion in personal income during its first five years. And another study that was conducted in Michigan and Ohio found that Medicaid makes it easier for beneficiaries to maintain employment. We have really a golden opportunity to save hundreds of millions of dollars for the state to provide better, more affordable care to the people of Wisconsin and strengthen the economy. That Governor Evers' budget, really, it is built upon the acceptance of these federal Medicaid dollars because the dollars that are used, the state dollars in the Department of Health and Human Services in the health care delivery system, it frees up that money to put towards transportation improvements, to put towards increasing investments in our higher education and our technical schools and universities. It goes towards our K-12 schools. And so the idea that the governor has put this out there, it is really critical in order for much of his other investments in the budget to happen. We certainly want to leverage Medicaid expansion to its fullest potential, ensuring that not only recovering residents and supporting them to stay healthy and to work, but we're also improving the economy and recognizing that health care systems as our cornerstones in many of our communities and our regions, they're large employers in our communities, and getting more money into people's paychecks and pockets is also a win-win. So as we look at the various opportunities in this budget through Medicaid expansion, accepting those dollars, we want to make sure that we can get our colleagues who on the other side of the aisle have historically said no to this, maybe because of ideology, maybe because we had a former governor who was not going to apply for it, and it was just not politically viable at that time with the former governor and the makeup of the legislature. We are seeing some cracks in the door right now with, obviously, Governor Evers putting this forward. Just this week, there's been some conversations and reporting that there might be Republican senators who are open to this. Like, we need to get, find a way to get our Republican colleagues to yes, because in other states, it's been bipartisan. We can't do it with one party alone. We need to demonstrate and have our colleagues hear from their constituents as well, finding a way to get to yes, because, like was mentioned, these are our federal dollars. We should bring them back to our state, and it really will help with the health care delivery system and access to affordable health care here in Wisconsin. So with that, I think that's the last slide, so we're, yeah, open up to Q and A. I want to do mention, Steve can say a few words, I do want to also recognize that Tammy Baldwin has a representative here, Greg Woburn, is Tammy Baldwin's new western Wisconsin representative. So I know that Senator Baldwin was just in La Crosse earlier this week doing an Affordable Care Act listening session, pre-existing conditions, and so certainly want to partner with our colleagues and with our partners in federal government who's talk about pre-existing conditions, talk about affordable health care and coverage for all of our citizens here. So Greg, thank you for attending.
I just want to make a couple of comments and then address some of the issues that have been raised by people who are close to expanding Medicaid. The one that we, the two that here most often are, number one, it's just a welfare program. It encourages people to not work. In fact, just the opposite is the case, as Representative Billings mentioned, if you fit into that gap there between, you know, the poorest of the poor and the almost poorest of the poor, it is to your benefit to quit your job or not take that second or third part-time job, and instead, you know, be totally dependent upon government assistance. This is a program that says, no, we want to encourage you to take that second part-time job or to take a full-time job that maybe doesn't have benefit. It is in your best interest, it's in our best interest to encourage that. This is not some liberal crazy type of program that, you know, that some people are saying. Look at states like, you know, Indiana, Ohio, Kentucky, Arkansas, Utah, those are not flaming hotbeds of liberalism. Those are pragmatic governors who are saying, this is money that we could get, that you'll just give to us? Yeah, we're going to take it. I mean, that's, so, you know, that's what we're encouraging people to say. And that leads me to the last point, which is that, an issue that Governor Walker had raised, saying, well, we don't know how long that money's going to come. If we get into this program, what if, you know, next year, the year after, then the federal government changes mind and says, well, we're not going to do this anymore? The answer to that is very simple, then we quit, because the law says you can get in just by saying you want in, and you can get out just by saying you want out. So it's not like you sign up and it's this bait and switch where, ah, now you're on the hook, but we're changing the rules, and guess what? You have to pay for all those extra people that you put into the system. If we, just as we got some people kicked out a few years ago, we can kick them back in, and if the government changes the rules at the federal level again in the future, we could take those people back off the rules if we chose to do that. So we have all of the options that are at our disposal at this point, to get in with basically the signing of a bill and to get out again if we needed to. So we want to hear your comments, your thoughts on this. Jen, do you want to?
Sure. I have, sure. If you have slips, and this can be kind of informal, there's a small group that we can just kind of raise hands and call on you as well. But there were slips at the, when you registered or signed in, if you want. I have some, I have one here, so I'll call on this person first. This is Becky. But if others of you have conversations or have questions, just please feel or raise your hand, or if you would like a slip, and we can collect your information, just so we know, have a record of who was here, we can follow up with additional information if necessary. But I will call on Becky Dahl from Richland Center. She is the Regional Director of the ADRC Aging and Disability Resource Center of Eagle Country, serving Crawford, Juneau, Richland, and Sauk Counties. So Becky, thank you very much for coming up here.
Yes, thank you. And it was nice, thank you for coming, and nice to meet you. You know, I just want to say is that I learned a lot today. I mean, exciting about the expansion, I'm very much in support of that, but your presentation today, there were some points on that, about the whole workforce in Wisconsin, as you know, is that we have a workforce shortage in all our careers. I'm also involved with youth apprenticeship, trying to get youth involved in more of our local careers. But certainly in our health care field, it is, as you know, it is a crisis. And so to really support that, in the Aging and Disability Resource Center, in, for example, Crawford County, in the greater Sheen office, we'll often see people coming to our office to look for, you know, services and supports, maybe up in the very rural areas of Crawford County, and there just really is no one available to go into their home and help them. So the next time they come to the ADRC to talk about services and supports, they're often then talking about options for nursing homes, because now they've been in their home and they haven't had anybody to help them with nutrition and house cleaning, you know, just the basic care, and how they have declined in their health care gradually. So obviously, we don't want people to be going to nursing homes sooner, you know, we want to help people to keep staying home as long as we can. It helps youth, it helps with our Medicaid as far as people who are, who are less expensive to stay home, but also for folks who have their own resources, staying home and paying for, you know, a few hundred dollars a month of in-home services versus going to a nursing home and paying thousands of, you know, and certainly people want to be there. But also in support of our nursing homes, we want quality care there. And so really looking at people who are, first, okay, workers and CNAs having livable wages, we often see those workers working two and three jobs, you know, and then, of course, there's that cycle of many of them are women, that cycle of them not being home because they're, they're working. But also that support is wonderful, that opportunity for folks to be able to stay on Medicaid and to, and to work those extra hours would be wonderful. So certainly I appreciate the support of the health care workforce on that. But also, we are fortunate in the ADRC Eagle Country, in Crawford Counties, we do have a dementia care specialist, and so we're very much in support of that expansion statewide. We really see the benefits of somebody who specializes, and our customers really know when they, we talk about a dementia care specialist, they really looked at having somebody who really has that expertise. I mean, it was just last week that, that our dementia care specialist and partner with Crossley Rivers trained 105 people in the community and Crossley Rivers on Dementia Live, which is really going through the experience of feeling the life flight to have dementia. And law enforcement has witnessed that. So the impact of what that is, so we appreciate that expansion. There is one thing that, that didn't mention that's kind of a new bill, if I could bring it to your attention just very quickly, I'll give it to you here. What it is, it's a bill that is simply called Improving Access to Medicare Coverage of 2019. As you know, when somebody goes into the hospital, they have to stay three days in order for Medicare to cover for them to go into a nursing home, right? If they go into two days and then they go into the observation kind of, that it doesn't count the third day. And so then, what this bill does is it counts those observation days. So then, because what happens is folks, if they're going, if they're needing to go to a nursing home and Medicare isn't going to cover, then they oftentimes go home, where they didn't have rehab, or they do go into the nursing home and once again, spending a lot of their resources and going on Medicaid. So I'm going to give this to you to look at.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. I think that's a health resolution. We will share that with our delegation, but also with Congressman Kind, Senator Baldwin, so he'll be familiar with HR 1682. But thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Yes?
Yes. So when I go to see the dentist in cash in the city plus, are they going to charge me $35 every time I go see the dentist, because I've had my dentures over a year, and they won't cover no dentures after a year? They started charging me $35 just to go see a dentist last year, but the year of my, the year of my dentures wasn't quite, wasn't quite up yet. If I go to the state across to see Dr. Suple in cash, are they going to charge me $35 every time? I wonder, because I'm on Medicaid, Badger Care, and the formal health care.
I, I don't know the answer. I can look into that. I don't know kind of what their, the fee schedule is, and if it is a per visit, and how other, other programs come in to help offset the costs. But we can get your name and contact, and we can look into that about... But we can get your name and contact and we can look into that about if that is a, how that fee is assessed and if it's a per visit.
I don't think this is right, that I should be charged $35. They did send me another bill, so, guess my writing a little note must have helped a little bit, I'm not sure.
So are you currently able to get into scenic plus and dental care? Okay, because I know they've had a waiting list, and so I'm glad if you're not on the waiting list.
I'll probably see the dentist this year or next year, hopefully won't be charged $35.
Yeah, we'll get your information.
Sure, that's fine.
Anyone else? Anyone? Yeah.
So if the state of Wisconsin has declined the federal funds and we're talking about asking for those funds, I'm guessing that the federal government is just sitting on that money, waiting for someone to ask for it back. It's being used. So how do we know?
Absolutely, if we're not, the money that has been available in the past, we've lost our opportunity. So the money that could have come here has gone to other states. We can get money going forward, but yeah, they weren't waiting for us to, to come asking for it. They spent it since we weren't asking.
My question is, what part of the federal budget do you think that this money would come from to re, to help expand our Medicaid?
That is money that is already in the federal budget. I would imagine it's under like the Department of Health and Human Services. And, I mean, so this is not, if Wisconsin jumps in, they're not going to raise taxes because Wisconsin is added to the list of states that would take it. It's just, there is this pot of money that's there and it's divided up among the states that are on the list. So maybe New York gets a little bit less, California gets a little bit less to make up for us getting a lower portion of it. But then taxes will not go up to, to cover Wisconsin jointly and, and federal services wouldn't change?
I just have a question. I've heard in the past that one of the reasons that insurance rates under the Affordable Care Act were, were lower in Minnesota than they were in Wisconsin was because Minnesota expanded Medicaid and we didn't. Is it, does accepting these funds affect Affordable Care rates?
I think they had set up exchanges. Wisconsin did not go to that model.
Okay, so it was exchanges. Okay, thank you.
Right. My name is Bob, local resident. And before, I think on your slide presentation, this notion of Wisconsin dollars going out, that we pay the federal taxes and we're leaving them on the table, that is not bringing them back. I recall that there is slides that show the income tax paid in by certain states on a per capita basis versus how much they benefit from federal dollars, also on a per capita basis. States like Minnesota, I know are net exporters, if you will, payers of federal dollars. They get far less back in reimbursement in general.
Dollar states.
And they pay a lot more national tax. I believe Wisconsin did that as well, but I'm not quite sure. I believe it's Wyoming is the largest recipient of federal dollars at the lowest amount of federal tax they pay yet. It's like $7,000 per capita in Wyoming. They pay their income taxes, but they get $11,000 per capita in general federal. I think that might help, bring it to relief for people. Hey, those are our federal dollars going in. And in general, I believe Wisconsin puts more income tax dollars forward than they receive.
Yes.
Wisconsin historically has been what Senator Shilling referred to as a donor state. I haven't seen really recent numbers, but the last I saw was we get about $92 back for every hundred dollars that we pay in. States that have large recipient populations, Florida for example, with a large number of retirees getting Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security. States that have military installations and so they get their Department of Defense dollars coming in, those are recipient states. Wisconsin doesn't seem to have either of those two things. And so, we've always historically been at around the 92% of our.
Well, I know you said that it's productive to set up competition, oh, if we quit X in, we ought to get Y back. But at least it shows that in general, we are, as you suggested, a net donor state. I think that brings us relief. You have a whole question? And secondly, I want to clarify an understanding here. I was long mindful that we were giving up $300 to $400 billion a year since the advent of the ACA. But what's been clarified, I believe for me tonight, is not that the ACA, the Affordable Care Act mandated the expansion of Medicaid and therefore, since federal laws in pursuit of state law, we had to expand Badger Care or Medicaid. But, and then if we did so, we could have gotten the federal dollars to offset that. Instead, it afforded the opportunity to expand Badger Care. And if we had expanded Badger Care, we were providing more opportunities for people to enroll at greater percentages of poverty levels. And that's, and I think that's an important clarification, at least for me. And it's not that we're using state dollars now to pay for a mandated expansion, we just haven't taken advantage of the opportunity to expand Medicaid.
Is that correct? The Affordable Care Act can both carrots and sticks. Some of the sticks within, like if you, you know, the existing conditions and so forth, if you didn't cover those things, there were certain penalties. This is one of the carrots where if you want to expand, we will give you more money to do it.
And you've demonstrated that if you expand, you actually get an economic impact that's very positive. Want to be deployed, want people not afraid to take additional jobs, et cetera. But the bottom line is, and finally, I believe you addressed another question I have, which is, you help me make sure I got this. The reasons for not going for this expansion really are more ideological rather than budget pragmatic. In other words, there's no reason like, oh, there's a catch here, you're going to pay X more 25 years from now. It is simply more or less ideological, or if you expand Medicaid, you're getting more money on the go.
That's our belief is this, just in ideological. And I mean, not to say that people can't have ideological differences of opinion, but I mean, when you look at the numbers and the facts, it seems pretty strong. And I think when you take a look at the governors of those conservative states that are also signing up for this, I mean, that tells you that the members are there supporting the logic behind it. And so they're setting aside ideology and saying, you know, heck with ideology, I don't have the money.
And I think some, some of our colleagues have used the argument of, how do we know it's, it may disappear in the future. How does that leave us hanging on the hook? That is not the same argument. I mean, I could use that with federal transportation dollars too. It doesn't really hold true to say anything could, you know, that, that, we shouldn't take federal highway dollars here in Wisconsin because who knows what it's going to look like in two to four years if those, that pot of money investment dries up. And so, as more and more states are looking at slower economies, cuts that they've had to put forward in their own budget, and these legislatures and governors that are, are more conservative than here in Wisconsin, they are accepting it and they are looking at it as a way to, for relief for their own budget issues. So I know, Alicia, you.
Well, I just, speaking on a thought of saying, I was under the impression that if we take the federal money, it changes the requirements about how, the administration of the program. And so that by, I don't know if this is true, I'm asking clarification. And by rejecting that money, then it's allowed the state to take more of the administration and put it into private hands? I, I've heard about this through managed care, actually, I don't know more about this, but that the managed care programs have changed quite a bit to private administration and that's sucked up a lot of the dollars. And similarly, if we were to take the Medicaid expansion money, we couldn't, it would be, it would be all call in the, in the public hands and not in private administration. Does that, anybody else heard anything like that? Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, and I know Secretary Palm of DHS, she comes to Wisconsin from the federal service and working in the previous, in the Obama administration. She's very familiar with the Affordable Care Act. She kind of uses the term that if we take this, this is, it pulls a lever for us to, to receive these dollars, but there's also opportunities with different matching funds available as well. And so she talks about this money can be used to match some other areas and needs of the budget. And so with Secretary Palm's experience and expertise, she really is meeting with legislators on both sides of the aisle to try to get them to yes and to find a way, and if it's not calling it Medicaid expansion, because that clearly has become a political football and using that terminology, that there are other ways, that there's kind of a backdoor approach, but we need to have legislative approval of doing this. If we can find, be, be creative of looking at these revenue, this revenue source as an infuse, an infusion of dollars into Wisconsin, that I, I have faith that, in her expertise in the federal government of being, how we can maximize.
Yeah, I was just in the, just heard some people down in Prairie Dushing last year were talking about how the, the changes in the way the money was taken from the federal level was changing their ability to use the money as efficiently as possible for their patients, for their clients. And I was just curious if you had heard anything like that in managed care?
Today, there was an article in the paper where I think some of the pressure that's really brought to bear is making a bit of a difference where my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, there's some tension there now. Where some people are saying, why can't we take this money or call it something else? Find a way that we can take this money and feel, and, it's in the article. Not make it look like we're going back on something that we stood so firmly for before. But as Senator Shilling said, with Governor Walker now out of the picture, this was a strong ideological point for him. Now with the new governor, things have changed. I know that there are some members that are getting pressured from their constituents joining Wisconsin, like want to take Medicaid expansion dollars. Questions, will their leadership open up to that? So, I think people who are weighing in are creating some tension there, which is good.
Yes?
Bear with me, this is kind of all that part, but I hope it all ties together. Some of the concern I've heard about expanding Medicaid from our representative in this district is that reimbursement rates are currently so low that more people on Medicaid rolls actually cost health providers, hospitals, clinics, et cetera. And that instead of expanding Medicaid while those rates are so low, we should instead focus on raising reimbursement rates to make sure that our hospitals aren't making any money. So first, the question is, could you illuminate what the current Medicaid reimbursement rates are for us, for healthcare providers?
I, I don't have the details on those rates, but I can tell you that one of the groups that is quietly going around really pushing to take the Medicaid money is the Wisconsin Hospital Association. They're not going to do something that is disadvantageous to them. But the simple fact of the matter, we need to, I mean, if you look at the Wisconsin reimbursement rate, we're just horrible. And, and that in and of itself is a problem that has to be addressed along with this issue. So, you know, I think we're on the same page with regard to both of those. We need to address the situation, you know, in, in Western Wisconsin, we're blessed with a lot of healthcare providers, but they're, they're all speaking with one voice saying, we can't survive much longer and provide care in rural areas, especially if reimbursement rates don't tick up, you know, and not just tick up, but they, they need to jump up due to actions.
I think it's something that low 40%, 44% or something reimbursement rate. And I don't know if there's any healthcare professionals in the audience to kind of correct me on that, but low 40%. We do not ask our road builders to build a road at, you know, with a 40% reimbursement rate. We don't. And so, it's, dentists have a low reimbursement rate, our providers do, our nursing homes do, so it's, we need to do that to increase reimbursement rates.
So that's the third part of my question before I get to the second part. My wife is a physician, she works for the AMH at the Little Park Clinic. Dr. Roy is another AMH physician here, so maybe you can comment as well. But I know from her experience that uninsured patients end up seeking emergency care or care through the emergency room often, or they delay care until something becomes emergent, when it might have been mitigated much earlier with much less invasive, less expensive interventions. So I know from her experience that the cost to our health providers is actually substantially higher when they're dealing with uninsured folks. So could you comment on the percentage or number of those 82,000 new Medicaid rollees that are currently completely uninsured? I know some of them have, for example, might have, you know, a little bit of employer provided health coverage for, right now, but it's, you know, of 82,000, is there a number of those that is completely uninsured right now?
My understanding is it's 82,000.
Okay.
I, I don't, I, I think, I, I can look at that and double check and get back to you, but my understanding is that those people have no public insurance. So as you said, they end up in emergency rooms, people have to get insurance on certain things, let things go, problems become worse, they end up in emergency rooms, it costs everyone more. So, and I, I don't really understand the representative in this area, I don't understand his rationale when he says, if you accept Medicaid expansion dollars, reimbursement rates will go down. I, I don't understand the rationale.
He didn't suggest they would go down, he just suggested that because they are so low, they're already costing our providers money, and so we don't want to add to that burden by expanding Medicaid coverage.
By having more.
That's an ideological argument?
But that would say that it makes more sense to have somebody come in with zero reimbursement because they're not going to pay their bill versus 40 something percent.
I'm not suggesting it was a logical argument, I'm just.
So, along with bringing these people on, into, into Medicaid expansion is more funding. So I, I think the understanding is that reimbursement rates would not go down, they would logically go up. And, and this is a huge problem for Wisconsin. Among the governor's task force on opioid abuse, we know in areas like Superior up in, and Bayfield, northern Wisconsin, where you may have to drive over two, two and a half hours to see a provider for treatment, people could go right across the border to dilute where they have openings, but they won't accept people from Wisconsin anywhere.
So the, hang on a second. The, the same representative told us that of those 82,000, I think his number was around 30,000 are already receiving some form of coverage. Sorry, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, thanks for showing that.
Fact checkers. And the last point, you mentioned raising reimbursement rates for dental providers and we all acknowledge that we need to raise reimbursement rates across the board. Is there any reason the $320 million savings that you're handing couldn't be directed to do exactly that in some form or other?
I think they're looking to, they, that would be part of the plan to look at, I think it's like, less than half a percent of the Medicaid budget goes towards dental reimbursement rates. And so, in order to help access to dental care and to incentivize dentists to see, to see those patients, dental reimbursement rates would.
Could it be invested in other providers' reimbursement rates as well theoretically?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no reason we couldn't take savings and reinvest them in something that addresses the problem?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm a retired dental hygienist. So, lucky me. So I know something about your mouth. And I have worked in private practice and also at clinics. And so, at a clinic, I was salaried, so the dentist or whoever owned the business didn't, couldn't say, well, it's a lost leader or you're, I don't get, I don't get enough reimbursement. So, so that's one thing. If it's in a clinic situation, whether it's a, whatever level of care provider, dentist, dental hygienist, they don't have to worry about paying the electric bill and whatever products they buy from the sales rep. So anyway, that's one thing. And the other is, it's confusing in dental because, when I worked at the clinic, and so I was generally providing education and cleaning teeth and x-rays and all that anyway. So you would find something and you'd say, oh, okay, well, you need, you need this level of care, you need a root canal, you need this, you need that. But your insurance isn't going to cover that, which was. isn't going to cover that, which was medic, in California it was medical, so it was denical. So if I slip and say that, that's what I mean. So, but they'd say, okay, well, how much would it cost? Well, probably a thousand dollars after we're all done. Oh, I can't afford that. Well, what will my insurance cover? Oh, we'll extract the tooth. Then you won't be charged anything. So unfortunately, people are left with that because no one, no one takes payment systems, unless they're your brother-in-law or sister-in-law or something. And even so, that is a downward slide if you start losing, especially permanent teeth and becoming kids. And then it affects the diet and the overall health. So I know this sounds like a PSA for dental care, but I do know something about it that I've been on both sides. And it's, it's difficult, you know, you go in for, like, and I would think this is, with a medical doctor, you go in with a broken arm, and then they find out you've got all this other stuff going on in your body. Well, oh, but sorry, we don't cover that, we're just going to do this. I, I'm seeing, that's how I feel like with the dental stuff. Or, well, you really need a crown, but you can't have, you can't have a cast crown that makes, you just get a stainless steel crown, which doesn't fit as well, and anyway, not to get too technical, but, so I, anyway, if you have a question for me, I'm a bit rammed and I didn't make notes as, to be as concise as the gentleman in bed.
And I think like the dental example, they have a different business model, because most dentists are like small businesses that operate. Yes. And they can't really do the caution, like in the hospital, there is, there can be, there's caution being, so you've got the, the private page with private insurance, and in the dental model that's been reinforced with me over the years, that they are really a small business, and so their business model is different than, say, the hospital.
Oh, they love that, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's why they're bound into aesthetic, you know, you know, Hollywood smiles and, you know, not necessarily function.
Yeah.
Look, I'm just, isn't the, the fact that healthcare providers don't, aren't mandated to take patients with Medicaid? So in other words, there are certain dentists that simply won't take them as patients?
Yeah, there are some counties that do not have dentists that will accept Medicaid patients. And, yeah, and up north, and we were talking about some of the counties, you know, up near Ashland, Bayfield, my colleague, my senate colleague, I don't think she is a psychiatrist in her district. And so then you're looking at telemedicine, and that's a different reimbursement setup as well, and there's some challenges with telemedicine and telehealth and reimbursement there. So even, as we talked about, sort of the reimbursement to our physicians and nursing homes, but even in telemedicine that they're referring to, that's an issue that we need to get through as well, because there's different, a shortage of reimbursement in telemedicine, telehealth.
What can we call Medicaid expansions? Where they'll still know what we're talking about, but it's not Medicaid expansion?
What can we call it? I, I had noticed that some of my colleagues in the majority party are now referring to it as welfare expansion, because they don't want to do it. And, and it is the terminology and that, that negativity of, of how they frame the issue. And I don't want to get into like, I'll really.
That's the wrong direction.
Yeah, that is the wrong direction of Medicaid, or of welfare expansion. You know, what we have right now is, you know, is, is, what we call it is Medicaid expansion, but to talk about, you know, expanding affordable healthcare for, you know, low income or the working poor in this state. But I, I, I do know that some of my colleagues are now referring it to it in a negative connotation. It's unfortunate, I think, as we have seen in polls and surveys that are done in Wisconsin, like the majority of Wisconsinites want us, want the legislature, want the governor to take this money. And so to find, to find a more appropriate or less political term, yes, that's all of our challenges.
In Vernon County, there are a lot of very hardworking farmers that, these families are on badger plow.
Many, yeah, many farmers are on, on badger here, and you and I said.
I support the ideologies. I think this whole thing is completely wrong. Free money, there's no such thing as free money. The government's going to give out any Medicare expansion dollars, they could put a, an anchor on that for anything that they want to. Who's going to stand up and say, you know what, we don't like the attachment that you're putting to these dollars? Who's going to stand up and say, we're going to deny benefits to some people because we're not going to accept those dollars under those terms? Not one of you will, all right? Healthcare is not a right. It simply is, especially at the federal government level. If the state wants to experiment with doing healthcare for its citizens, that's a state thing. But people, there is no such thing as healthcare right.
I disagree with that. Steve Reber provision somewhere. I think that's not what it means, you know, and we'll know.
But you don't need to disagree.
I, I think that, I mean, it's a, it's a basic human right, and.
Based upon what?
Stopping interrupting him.
Based upon being a human being. That's.
Is that in the Constitution?
Sure.
How?
Excuse me, if you're angry and don't want to hear this, just leave.
We're having a conversation.
If you're.
No, he can, he can express his opinion, that, that's certainly fine. I'm okay with that, because it's important that we have this discussion. There is no free lunch, but the money that we're talking about here is money that's already being raised, and it's being divided among the states.
I understand.
So let me continue though. So states that are taking it now are taking it and following the rules and are happy with it. So what we're saying is, we would like to be one of those states. So we're not talking about raising anybody's taxes, we're not talking about the federal government raising any additional money.
I understand these things.
We're just talking about the money that is there right now, that we can get a slice of that pie. That's really all that we're talking about here.
And what if they decide to put attachments on that you don't like?
Then we have the right to get out. As I said earlier.
I would say get out, but.
No, we, we have.
Instead of saying the federal portion, you disagree with the attachments.
It's the, well, here's another example, you know, Senator Shilly mentioned transportation dollars. You know, right now, if you want federal tech transportation dollars, you have to have a twenty-one-year-old breaking age. Wisconsin could say, you know, we don't want to have a twenty-one-year-old breaking age, we want it to be eighteen, so take your federal ta, your transportation dollars, I mean, we could say that, but we choose to, to say, okay, twenty-one-year-old breaking age as part of the deal of getting.
So then, and you wouldn't give up some of the sovereignty of the state in order to get those dollars?
Yeah.
Which is basic as that?
That, that is true. If you don't want to play by the rules, they're the ones that have the money. If we don't want that money, we don't have to follow those rules. If we want the money, I happen to like those rules, I think that they make sense, pre-existing conditions and, you know, a greater expansion of who's eligible. I think those are rules that are good rules, not something that I have to hold my nose to accept that money. If there was something in there that I, I said, you know, this is money that we have to get, but man, I just, that is not good, that we have to give up this or have to do that, but there's nothing in there that I've seen.
What if it comes later?
That we get out. That's, I mean, that's what I have said before, is the law is written that the day you don't want to follow the rules anymore, you write a letter to Washington and say, take your money, we're out of the program. That's all that you have to do.
And then you're going to have to deny coverage to the people that have been previously covered.
Which we did previously already, though, remember that. We had eighty-two thousand people that were covered that aren't anymore. We told them once before, sorry, you're out. So I mean, we could do that again if we chose to. I'm saying, let's get those people back in here for now, and if we don't like it, sorry, people, you may have to get back out. But what we're saying is, what I'm saying is, the rules that they're putting down as a condition of accepting that money aren't onerous at all, from what I can see. I haven't found a single provision in there that I say, that just doesn't make sense.
But the, just like you're saying, the reimbursement from this, from the federal government for our transportation, for our healthcare and all these things. What if we were living in a more limited government, where the government wasn't taxing us so much? We all had more dollars in our pocket because we were paying less in taxes? We could afford these things on our own, all right? I haven't had insurance in nineteen years. In nineteen years, I've spent less than six thousand dollars on healthcare.
And that's good, and, you know, glad that you've been helping.
All the time I've spent trying to buy all these insurances.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I forgot the point that I was going to make. Give me a second.
You've been really lucky so far.
I buy healthcare, I, my four German Shepherds have insurance. I pay less than three hundred and fifty dollars a month for all four of them. The most expensive one's taken in a hundred thousand dollars in claims. I still pay less than seventy dollars a month for him. And it all, a lot of it boils down to tort reform, all right?
So, so I know, I know the point that I was going to make, when, when you said, you know, lower in taxes or something. That is an issue that you need to take.
To that guy's watch, for example.
Because this is a federal program that is there, so whether you like it or don't like it, isn't an issue for any of the three of us up here. The rules as they stand today are that there is a program in place, that people, that states can join in. We have no say over whether that program stays or goes. Our position is, because that program is there, let's take advantage of it. If you think that that program should go away and we should lower taxes, take it up with your congressman, take it up with your senators, if it goes away, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do at the state level. All we're saying is, it's there now, so let's take advantage of what is there now and is being offered.
I think you jump days and sub near the state by accepting all these federal dollars.
All right, we would, we would.
Move on.
Okay. But thanks for your opinion.
And we're happy, did you sign in? Like, we are happy if there's more follow-up that is needed.
Of course, I did.
Oh, okay, good, that's, that's your address, wonderful. Chelsea?
So I just have a question. I know that there's some talk of Republicans who are interested in finding a spot where there can be a compromise, and they were thinking about maybe modeling after Utah's program, and I'm not super familiar with what's happening in Utah. Do you guys have any insight about, like, where those compromises could happen? I was kind of told that maybe there was the option of accepting this money, but then allowing, almost like a voucher to be used towards like the private market, so then if people are, you know, wanting to get insurance through their employer or somewhere else, that maybe they could use it in that way? Are you familiar with that idea, or do you know any more about, like you said, the Utah's program?
I am not familiar with Utah's plan, however, I was, I ran into Secretary Palm, and I think some are looking at an Arkansas plan, and she described to me that that would not work in Wisconsin. I don't know the details on that, but as we're looking at other states and what models work and don't work, I don't, I, I, it's complicated and I can get back with you, other than just kind of explaining with the Arkansas models. But I know that that's one that some are talking about, and for whatever reason, in our delivery system and how we are in Wisconsin, it would not work. I don't know if it's because of population size, I, I don't know, because of how our health system is and our delivery system, insurance and things like that. But I don't know, are you familiar with the?
No, I saw that article too, and I don't remember the details of it. It is, it, it, that's where we're really lucky to have Secretary Palm, because she was the expert, I mean, that was one of Governor Hoover's best hires, I think, is bringing somebody that understands the most complicated system in the world, and that's really where we're at right now.
Okay, and then I have a couple other just little questions. One is regarding support of home care or personal care workers. With the managed care organizations, as Alicia was kind of talking about earlier, I'd heard that there was money going to be directed in that realm to increase wages, but I'm wondering about the self-directed options, such as like the IRIS program, where folks are able to hire family members or friends from the community to actually be helping them with those personal cares in the home. Would they also be seeing, like, their wage increases?
Maybe that's a provision, a budget that we have to do a little research on. I don't know that far, so we can.
Sure. Yeah, I know a lot of my questions are kind of more related to the disability community and kind of more specifics. The other thing I just wanted to ask about was the Medicaid purchase program, so the MAP program. And if this percentage goes from, is it one hundred now to one thirty-eight, is that right?
Yes.
Then would folks who maybe just missed kind of that cutoff, so maybe they were at a hundred and twenty percent, would they be able to move up the Medicaid purchase plan where they have premium for coverage? And then would they have it for free, basically, or do you know how that would look?
I would think so. I don't know that for sure, but that would make sense. Again, that's another thing we can verify, but to me, that would be the reason for doing, you know, having that increase up to one thirty-eight, because otherwise you've got another group of people that, that you can say, well, maybe you treat it differently.
Okay. And then I guess, like, another misconception that I heard that I just wanted to comment on was, people just saying, you know, the most vulnerable populations already have sort of like a safe guard, and there's those sliding scale programs, or, you know, we have scenic gloves, but why do we need all of these other things? And I'm just not quite sure if people recognize really like the waiting lists and the overall utilization of, for instance, the emergency room, and, you know, it might not always be that a person is, do not care if, like, let's say they break their arm and they go to the ER. However, you know, people are waiting until it really gets that bad, and then it is costing us more money. Or, you know, they're trying to get into scenic gloves, but then they have six-month waits, so something that was just a little cavity now, all of a sudden, you know, is much worse and there's an infection. So I guess I just wanted to comment that I'm, I'm seeing that in our area, and it's, you know, difficult to ask.
Well, and the scenic gloves is a FQHC, federally qualified healthcare center, they have higher reimbursement rates than, say, a dentist who is not part of the FQHC. And so the dentist that I see in La Crosse, and I was just there yesterday, his reimbursement rate is lower than the FQHC. So even within the healthcare system, there are inequities depending on where or the modeling you're practicing on, or treating patients.
Could you repeat?
Oh, okay.
So, to comment on the dental issue, it's certainly a big part of people's health
and infections in the mouth, and cause negative consequences all over the body, including the heart. And we've also expanded scenic gloves into the hospital recently, so I'm not sure everybody realizes that, but there's more access that way.
For dental care, right, you're after.
Seen, seen, we should separate because there's scenic gloves self-care too. Another thing that I wanted to comment, we have, we touched on this under insurance, I have a lot of farmers that have a huge debt, but basically they're uninsured because they won't go into the bathroom, you know, ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars. So they're basically catastrophic coverage.
I just, I wanted to say that I, I, I think it's a really good move in the right direction, so thanks for holding this, because it's really helpful, I think, for people to understand. And, and to the gentleman's point about tort reform and that, those problems, I actually think that the problem has more to do with the private healthcare industry and insatiable need for profit from shareholders, and I think that this, the move towards a Medicaid expansion will help people see that that's actually a really reliable way to get healthcare done. And I think that there's plenty of healthcare providers that feel that way too. Of course, we need to raise the reimbursement rates, but I think that we can raise the reimbursement rates if we can dampen down the profit sector as much and, and take some of that profit and put it into the people who are actually giving the care. And then we'll have more people entering the field as well. So I think it's a move in the, in the right direction, I think. Thank you for your work.
Without profit, you're not going to have innovation.
Not, not getting what?
Without profit, you won't have innovation.
That's demonstrably incorrect, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me go over here.
The, sorry, you know, the hospitals getting behind supporting the program and all that, just like colleges, why they're behind student loans and all that stuff. Because it's a backstop by the taxpayer. So hospitals, take Gunnerston, Gunnerston operated out of four cinder block walls, set of goof facility that they have, but they, what did they spend on that facility that they could have put into other quality healthcare, right? So hospitals want guaranteed money for the programs that they're running. That's why they're supporting this. Same way with college tuition and stuff. Which college has ever lowered its tuition after having been told, you know, by representatives that will guarantee affordable education? No school has ever lowered. No school has ever lowered its tuition. Hospitals won't lower the rates if they know they're a taxpayer backstop. If they're certain, if a hospital's providing services that's too expensive and nobody's partaking in it, they either reduce the service or they do away with the service, the cost of the service, or they do away with the service. It's just simple economics. And by providing a taxpayer backstop, all you're doing is encouraging higher prices. Is that simple?
Unfortunately, we have one of the worst healthcare systems in the entire world.
What?
Oh, yeah.
We have the best healthcare in the world. Why do people come to this country for all over?
Calm down, calm down.
If we can add a logical distinction in the line, that we're the seventeenth ranked healthcare system in the entire world. We're first for cost. We use our money poorly. There's a lot of waste. There's, believe me, there's enough claim to go around all over the place. I certainly agree with your statement about privateering. We're supporting drug companies. They sell their drugs across the border in Canada, cheap. We're supporting them and we're paying them, lining their pockets. We have a lot of administrative costs that are overdone. Tort reform, I agree with you on that. We have something we can add.
I didn't say we couldn't, we have regulation. But we have the best healthcare in the world.
No, we don't.
Health appropriate might be just very wrong. We still have the most innovations.
If we, we have the, um, in one sense, we do. We have a really good healthcare system if you have money. But if you don't have cash, if you don't have insurance, you're stuck.
The federal government shouldn't take so much of our cash.
We have people coming over from Saudi Arabia to go to Mayo Clinic because it's the best in the world. But overall, our system is very poor. We're, we don't take care of the, of the people that need to. We don't take care of pregnant mothers. We don't take care of infants and babies. I'm telling you, we have a poor healthcare system. Whether it boosts by every function it is, it's not a good system. We can do a lot better than that.
Okay, we've got two more people. And we've got about fifteen minutes. So the gentleman in the back with the hat. And then the gentleman, um, with the, with a t-shirt. You're all on.
This, this is maybe just a real quick question. Um, I wonder if you could just lay out real quick, uh, for a layperson like myself, uh, when it comes to negotiating, uh, these reimbursements, who is part of that process? Like, um, yeah, I guess who's involved, are, like, the hospitals, I'm sure. And then you guys, yeah, if you could just lay that out a little bit for me, that'd be great.
Well, legislature really does not have a seat at the table to negotiate the reimbursement rates. I think it's probably, it's federal government is, the, just, yeah, yeah, the waivers.
Yep. So the federal government, state has some input. It would come through Department of Health Services or waivers for certain things. But, um, Governor Walker actually got a waiver for, um, mental health reimbursement, I think, a couple of years ago. Um, so it's a, it's, it's a complicated, multi-tiered, like most things in healthcare.
Right. Okay.
The gentleman in the back.
Um, I was curious if this budget includes any, anything about, like, people talk about issues when we have now healthcare, how money's spent now. Did the budget address that? Like, maybe addressing places where there's too much profit or addressing, or people, places that are not transparent, or how they spend their money, or how it's organized? Does that, this budget include anything interesting in that?
I'm trying to think of, uh, there's legislation that's been proposed to deal with a few different issues. One is, um, prescribing, um, medications. Um, so I'm trying to think of items in the budget that would.
Yeah, I think what probably, well, what I probably, what needs to be done is to just look at the whole thing and, and almost start over. But keep in mind, this is Governor Evers' first budget. I mean, he got four in in January and submitted a budget, you know, just a few weeks later. I would think that this next one may probably be more creative in terms of, are there different ways of doing some of these things? You know, after he's kind of, you know, found the bathroom and, you know, figured out where all the skeletons are hidden and so forth. I mean, at that point, I think that, you know, you may see more creativity. If you go back a few decades, you know, um, it was in this, like, second or third term that Tommy Thompson came up with a lot of, you know, basic things. His version of welfare before and some other things. Because after you kind of get used to how everything works, then you can look at it again and say, okay, maybe I can look a little bit different. So I don't imagine you see a ton of innovation in terms of looking at this budget and finding those, those things. But I think you probably will going forward. So, stay tuned.
Um, I'd just like to comment that I was really glad to see the transportation aspect, um, especially living in, like, a rural community where you don't have a system and it's limited, um, cabs. A lot of folks are relying on MTN, other transportation services to get done. Especially if, say, their equipment isn't in La Crosse. Um, and so making it a bigger business is just a really good place to see, especially for folks in our area who, um, do not drive or don't have access to, you know, friends and family who can provide that transportation.
Yeah, I think that was a ten percent increase. I think, I'm, I know mass transit was ten percent, but I think looking at some other delivery models increases, um, for access.
So do you like to have a copy of the budget with footnotes and everything on one place? You know more detail about this budget. Good for you.
Chelsea is a wonderful advocate on many areas of the budget. And it's familiar and comfortable to us.
I was part of maybe the class at UW-L, so we debated this today and I had to go over the comms. So I'm very familiar with those stats, because, yeah, it's helpful.
I want to respond to your question again about, um, about the budget and whether there, uh, to, I, I think that to do the kind of thing that you're talking about, where you have to do a comprehensive look at different programs and where there may be waste and, and, um, and what we can do. But I think that is something that is not likely found in a budget. The, um, those of us on both sides criticize budgets for that, too much policy in them. This is kind of just laying out, um, the governor's priorities and how, um, and it should be for all governors, the priorities and, and where they feel like, um, you know, precious taxpayer, taxpayer dollars should be spent. But the type of thing that you're talking about is absolutely needed. Um, and that's the type of thing where, um, a committee or a task force or a summer study committee, um, I think is best equipped to deal with some of the, some of that type of thing. Um, but, yeah, I think you raised it a point.
I, I do want to say, on the, uh, healthy, healthy women, healthy babies, um, model within the budget, the governor talks about investing, um, and I think it's some reimbursement rate for doulas as an example, um, and looking at prenatal care. And so on the wellness and the prevention and wellness side, investing early. Um, so rather than some of the, you know, more costly issues that come up if you don't receive prenatal care, uh, the example of, um, mental health services for postpartum. I mean, some of that is investing on the front end. And so I think if you look at some of the innovations, and I guess we can debate if it's innovative or not to be using doulas. Um, and in some communities, that is kind of the preferred childbirth delivery method and personnel, personnel sounds like a cold, yucky word, but, um, uh, but preferred provider. Um, so, I mean, that's one example. I was trying to kind of think about sort of the innovations and maybe some thinking outside the box areas there. We really haven't had an emphasis on healthy women, healthy children, and looking at some of our infant mortality rates in communities and, and trying to improve on that. We've got about five minutes left. Is there anyone that hasn't spoken? Or has someone that would like to?
Yes.
Um, I'll make quick comments. Um, a few years ago, I downloaded some statistics from the Kaiser Family Foundation on Medicaid in Wisconsin. And this report was from January two thousand and seventeen. And some of the interesting statistics they brought out was that Medicaid or CHIP, and I guess those would both be in Badger Care. CHIP is for children.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the statistics were that Medicaid or CHIP covers one in seven adults under the age of sixty-five, one in three children in Wisconsin, three in five nursing home residents, and one in two people with disabilities. So sometimes people or politicians, um, present Medicaid recipients as lazy, um, non-working people. Another statistic they presented was that eighty percent of adults and Medicaid enrollees in Wisconsin are in families with a worker.
Well, I think going back, I mean, to some of those, um, families who are covered, I think back to when Governor Doyle was governor, he expanded Badger Care to cover kids. And when the kids were covered, then the parents were most more likely to seek care and be covered. So really, it was trying to get to a way to cover families through, through getting the kids covered and immunizations and wellness checks. And as we look at the Medicaid budget and the Medicaid population, more and more emphasis, I think, should be placed on health and wellness, on those incentives for healthy eating, for healthy habits and, and wellness prevention. And use that as an incentive because, um, our Medicaid budget is growing. And what we can do to try to curb those costs through better, healthy lifestyles and access to healthy food and, and those programs, I think, are really important.
Another statistic, um, in, in this report, I think, was that forty-eight percent, um, Wisconsin maternity costs are covered by MTN. Forty-eight percent. That tells you the need of, for young families who are support.
I think if you looked at the statistics from Rockland and Vernon County, you'd be more surprised.
Yeah, I was just looking, I knew that there was a, we have a Governor Evers' budget on supporting Vernon County. Um, and as we look at, um, some of the statistics, three point, uh, well, in, in Vernon County, you'd see nine million dollars of new investments in Vernon County. Uh, that would be three point four million to expand Medicaid to an estimated four hundred and twenty-three Vernon County residents. Um, two hundred and thirty-four thousand expanding access to behavioral health, including crisis intervention and telehealth services. Eighty-four thousand dollars to preventing childhood lead poisoning through lead abatement and supporting child with lead poisoning through the Birth to Three program. A little over two hundred thousand dollars in improving access to dental services by increasing payments to dental providers, including, including those who provide, um, service to people with disabilities and expanding the Seal a Smile program that we see in schools. Uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars enhancing Medicaid benefits and services to new community health benefit and postpartum coverage for new mothers. Three hundred and five thousand dollars increasing funding for physicians. A hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars increasing funding hospitals. Uh, four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars increasing funding for providers of long-term care and services, including family care, IRIS and nursing homes, and boosting personal care worker wages. Um, talked about the dementia care specialist, that'd be a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in investment here in Vernon County. Uh, four point three million dollars, uh, to provide coverage to current Medicaid, Badger Care Plus, Senior Care and Food Share employment and training program members and permanently ending the waitlist to serve all eligible, eligible children in the Children's Long-Term Support Waiver Program. I think that's an area that the governor would like to eliminate, that waiting list throughout the state, uh, for children on that long-term support program. And then finally, twenty-seven thousand dollars supporting the Mental Health Consultation Program with conditional and supervised release and dispatcher-assisted cardio-pulmonary resuscitation program. So that's a little bit of a breakdown, if you would like that. I think this information to you about how serving Vernon County, uh, here can, with those dollars and need the services. And we have Crawford County as well.
So people have mine in their chairs, otherwise they're at the table over there.
Yeah. So with that, any other last comments if, or questions? We can stick around a little bit. But I do want to thank you for attending. Good conversation. We appreciate, um, hearing these questions, the feedback, the observations, the insight that you have. And, uh, this is a process, the, the budget is a process. Right now, it is in the hands of the Joint Finance Committee, who have concluded their four statewide listening sessions. And they will be voting starting their executive session probably May ninth or so, in about a week to ten days, that they will start voting and either accepting Governor Evers' proposals, amending it, changing it, putting in their own ideas, uh, as the finance committee moves forward and then on to the legislature. And we've heard that the finance committee would like to, uh, wrap up their work by the end of June and then on to the legislature in July. So we will see what happens on that, on that timeline. It is, um, a divided or shared or split legislature with a governor, Democratic administration, Republican legislature. So we will see what will have to happen on compromise moving forward on some of these. And you had a question, and I will call you back.
So my understanding with the JFC is anything in the budget can be removed from it by the Joint Finance Committee, is that correct?
They can, well, we have a, the memo will be coming out about policy in the budget. And so any items, um, that are deemed policy from the nonpartisan fiscal bureau, um, will be removed. Some of that could be put in, back in, depending on sort of the definition of policy from the co-chairs in the committee. Um, they can, we've heard that the Republicans who control the legislature would like to look at, starting at really Governor, would be Governor Walker's base budget. So the second year budgets are two years. So Governor Walker's second year budget would sort of be the base budget that they would be operating under. Um, but we'll see what they do if they, they accept any of Governor Evers' starting points. And there could be some catching ground on some of these issues.
So in other words, everything is up for grabs?
Yes.
In, in the proposed budget?
Yes.
So how do folks in this room make their voices heard to the Joint Finance Committee?
Uh, you can go online and contact through email, call their offices. Every office has an eight-hundred number. And I think those sixteen members, there are twelve Democrats and four Republicans to, um, oh, oh, shoot, that was. Yeah, all right, there are twelve Republicans, four Democrats. Um, and, shoot. Um, so contact those legislators. But I think also, as legislators, I mean, Representative Oldenberry is not on the finance committee. He is a freshman first-term legislator. Continue to contact his office, uh, myself as your state senator, but also surrounding legislator, like, regional areas as well. And so I just think that that information and your calls and comments are really important. So it could be the toll-free number, it could be email, it could be mail with stamp, old-fashioned anyway, that, but that, that, that conversation and dialogue is important and feedback.
To kind of take off on that, I'd like to contact Representative, um, Oldenberry close to when he's gonna be potentially voting on this.
Okay, and he's doing listening sessions as well. Um, I think last night he was in Casston. I think he's got two more. He was here last week? Um, so I think if he makes himself available, um, stop by his listening sessions as well. So maybe he's only has one more that he would be.
When will there be a vote that he's involved in?
We don't know that. But it'll be sometime this summer. But, but then, I, I mean, if you're, if you want him to work to add something or take something out of the budget, you really need to contact him then. Yeah, everybody has a budget buddy.
And, and his budget buddy is, um, John Liger, who's the Assembly co-chair of Joint Finance. So that's a good budget buddy to have. So it can go both ways. If he hears some things, he can pass those on to nicer, too.
Yeah, so, all right, well, thank you very much.
It's a credit.